Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, and let the roll reflect that we have a quorum. And tonight, we have a couple presentations. First off, we will have a presentation from the Dakota County Historical Society, the Laduke Historic Estate, and we have with us Matt Carter. Welcome, Matt.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Fassbender and City Council and staff. As mentioned, my name is Matt Carter. I'm Executive Director at the Dakota County Historical Society and just kind of doing our annual update on the site. So for those of you that don't know, Dakota County Historical Society has three historic sites that we operate within the county itself. We operate the Loshie Museum in South St. Paul, which is where my office is normally located. The Sibley Site in partnership with the Minnesota Historical Society, which is at Mendota. And then we operate the Laduka State here in Hastings, and we've been operating that site in partnership with the city since 2005, when it was turned over from the Minnesota Historical Society to the city of Hastings. So a few things that we just want to go over from this past year. We have, again, continued our events. As many of you know, our site supervisor, Mariah Ring, has left her position and is currently working at the Minnesota Historical Society. And so I was talking with Mayor Fassbender earlier, we are in the process, ideally by the end of this week, having an offer given and received and accepted by the end of this week, and then hoping to have that person in their role by the end of this month. The site itself opens for tours May 16th, so we'll be open from May 16th through October 20th, giving tours at the Laduka State, and those are just the general tours this month. And next month, we will have seven school groups coming through. That'd be about upwards of around 600 to 700 students in total coming through the sites, as well as going out into the schools. That's one of the things we've done specifically as an organization, but also here with Mariah, when she was here, doing in-school presentations. And so within the last year, we have probably reached about 1,200 students doing programs and presentations related to the fur trade in the Sibley Site, but then also the Civil War. That's one of the other more popular ones we do with our history trunk that was created, and talking about the history of the Civil War, Minnesota, but then also William Laduke's connection to that. So those are some of the things we've done in the past year. Looking forward to the next year, we also want to thank the city for CIF funds that we have been able to utilize over the past two years. They have done a number of things that we've been able to accomplish at the site, ranging from looking at getting the fencing put in throughout the back of the site, which was one of the security concerns that was done with a study a couple of years ago. We put in fencing along the backside. We're looking, we were looking to extend the fence on the, along 17th Street, but it was cost prohibitive because everything with that was custom related to that historic look that had to be done on the site. But we also are looking at new exhibits that we're putting in through the Simmons shed in the upstairs at the house, looking at the Needlework Company and the Women of Hastings. And one of the exciting things we're working through right now is the Minnesota Historical Society is looking to turn back over about 2,000 artifacts related to the Laduke family. So when they took over operations of the house and then right before they turned the site over to the city of Hastings, almost everything from the collection there was taken to the Historical Society in, in storage since 2005. Some of this stuff that will be coming back hasn't been seen for 60 to 70 years, if at all. So we're really excited for the opportunities this presents. We're going to be using CIF funds to help purchase shelving units that will be storing as many of these artifacts as we can. And because our museum is temperature-controlled, anything that is extremely sensitive or fragile and needs that temperature-controlled environment will be storing at our Loshie Museum in South St. Paul. And so that's one of the, the real exciting things that we're looking forward to, and we'll have a kind of a grand opening reception once everything is in place. And we'll have about 20 of those larger artifacts placed throughout the house. So the Laduke dining table will have his writing desk, things along those lines. Also this next year, within the next month, we'll be finalizing our George Daniels design. So George Daniels, if you're not familiar, was a former slave, and he and his wife, who was also a former slave, ended up marrying. She was from Prescott. He met William Laduke when he was quartermaster, and he lived as a hired hand on the site in the carriage barn through the hired-hand room. And he wasn't the only one that had lived there, but he was kind of the, the person we focus on with this exhibit. So the entire carriage barn is kind of three separate sections. And as you walk into the left side of the carriage barn, you'll learn the story about George and Chloe and how they met. And then as you go into the middle section, the large one, you'll learn about their family and what they did while they lived here, and then where they left and homesteaded in White South Dakota. And then as you start to transition into the third room on the far right, that's where you'll learn about a lot of these early Black families that settled in Hastings and the surrounding region in Minnesota. So that project, again, the final design is ongoing, should be done within the next month. And then we'll have about 200,000 to 250,000 left to put into that project, and we hope to have that done within the next three years. The other project is our Black Heritage Trail Project. So this is a concept plan that we've created of what a Black Heritage Trail through the city of Hastings could look like. And it would be looking at the families, businesses, and important parts and regions of the community with the early Black families that settled here all the way up through. I think we're kind of looking about the 1940s to the 1950s. So that project, again, is a concept plan, so it's what could be done. Nothing will be implemented at this point, but that should be done around August. And so we're looking forward to that, and we'll be sharing those documents with the city staff and as well as the council once those are completed. So those are just, again, some of the things we've accomplished this past year and what we're looking forward to within the next year. If there's any questions, feel free to let me know. But again, I thank you all for your support for not only the Laduka State, but the Dakota County Historical Society.
Thank you, Matt. Council, any questions? Okay, Councilmember House?
Thank you so much for coming and speaking today and giving us these updates. I really appreciate learning about what the Laduke and Dakota County Historical Society do and how much, how much it strengthens our town with its education towards children and towards adults. I'm really grateful to see all these new artifacts coming in as well, and these proposed trails as well, so it'll be very exciting.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Councilmember Veritchoff?
I echo, thank you, Mayor. I echo Councilmember House's comments here, and I was, I loved hearing the number of schoolchildren that are coming through for that. Pardon me, I'm getting over a cold. How many annual visitors would you say outside of the schoolchildren does Laduke see?
Yeah, and that was a question I knew would be answered, so I appreciate the question. Unfortunately, I don't have that answer right now. What I'll be doing is going through the files and kind of what Mariah had generated and doing a rough estimate. You know, normally, we have about anywhere between 7,000 and 10,000 site-use visitors. And I would say within the last couple of, or this last year, we're probably on the, the lower end of that, probably around the 7,000 range. There were a number of events that we were hoping to get going that didn't quite get off the ground as we, as much as we had wanted. But total attendance, as far as tours, things along like those lines, those normal attendance numbers were kind of right on par with what we had expected. But I think our, our overall programming numbers were probably a little lower than what they had been in the past, as far as special events. And there's one last thing I just thought of. If, on April 27th, hopefully everyone has received an invite to it, we are hosting an event in South St. Paul about basically bringing the descendants from these early Black settlers that, again, settled in this region, bringing their descendants together, and we were hoping to do it here in Hastings. But as far as attendance numbers, and we were looking to do it at Laduke, would not have the space. We're up around 100 attendees right now, and within the next week or so, we'll have those finalized numbers. But we're, we're probably expecting around 100 to 125. We also have an exhibit at our Loshie Museum that focuses on the Black pioneering families, and it has a really heavy focus on the Hastings community. So with our space that we have available there, as well as this exhibit and where our research files are, that's why we're hosting it in South St. Paul, even though it's a Hastings event, basically. So again, if you have not received that, let me know, and we'll get you that invite again.
Great. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Councilmember. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
See you at the Laduke, right?
Yes. Thank you.
Tonight, we also have a, an update from our Arts and Culture Commission by Barb Hollenbach, and this is going to be the first annual report from our new commission. Welcome, Barb.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I am both honored and privileged to be giving a report, the first inaugural annual report of the Arts and Culture Commission. We had an interesting year. As you know, we, we just completed our first year in this March. So a lot of it, we kind of crafted as we went. We're still learning. We have a long way to go, but we did accomplish a few things, some pretty interesting things, I think, that we did for the city and hope to continue that in the future. So some of the things that I'd like to talk about tonight is the way that the Arts and Culture Commission goes about its work. So during the last probably six months of conversations, recurring themes kept coming up on what was important to the commissioners to advocate for and to see what was important in the community, and that centered around visual art, performing arts, and cultural activities. So visual arts and static art would be like the Dale Lewis sculptures, performing arts like music, cultural activities, working with the history and some of the cultural organizations like BR4R. So, and then, once we kind of, that really made us a lot easier to focus on our activities and budgeting and where we're going to allocate dollars. So I'll come back to work on, on some of our accomplishments a little bit later. In, in addition to working on those three themes, we also have several subcategory or subcommittees that help facilitate some of our internal issues and where we are headed and going. And one of them is the policy and procedures. Being a brand-new commission, we had no documents. What do we do? How do we do it? Processes. So our work that we did last year, which was kind of for naught, is we thought, oh, this'd be great. We could graft a lease agreement for all the artists to use, and we could just have one document. Couple of meetings in, realize all the artists have their own lease agreements. So it was just, you know, one of those learning opportunities. So it's just, it goes to show you that we have a lot to learn, but we keep persevering. This year, we are working on a donation policy, how the donated art would, would come through the city of Hastings and how that would, what would be acceptable and how that would work. The other main subcommittee is Outreach and Communications, and our two commissioners work closely with Don Skelly, the Communications Director. They have facilitated working on flyers for the Creative Convergence and working on press releases and any kind of information that goes out through the public realm through the city. Also flushing out the webpage for the Art and Culture Commission. So they're constantly doing, maintaining and updating. And Jeannie Tribe, who's one of the commissioners, is also a photographer, so a lot of the photography on our webpages is from Jeannie. So we all have our, like, talents and, and skills that we like to kind of contribute. And then the third one that we haven't really activated, a subcommittee, and that will be project bases, like fundraising and grant writing. We're just not there yet, but I wanted to keep it in place in case those, that kind of activity was needed. So maybe going forward, we would activate that project base, because all the grants are project-based, for sure. And then going on to our accomplishments, even though we kind of stumbled a few times, we had, we had a pretty successful year. Some, some of our activities were, like, small. Some were pretty big. One of them that we did was we crafted a brochure for self-guided tours for the public to come through City Hall. We did art inventory of the city assets, which number around 180, very surprising. We also facilitated the Dale Lewis sculpture for the Hastings Environmental Protectors with their community investment fund grant of Vermilion Linear Park. And then also leased and installed three Dale Lewis sculptures on the River Rock, and that was a very important theme for the commission, was to reinstate sculptures along the River Rock that had been there in the past. And then also, there was the, a fourth Dale Lewis sculpture that had been on loan, and we arranged a lease payment for, for Dale Lewis for his leatherback turtle that's under the bridge. So we also did, collaborated with the Pioneer Room and the Historical Society and put on a fabulous tour of this building in January, which resulted in about 125 people going through the tour. So it was very successful and hope to do it again someday in the future. We also are working or drafted a recommendation for the Lake Rebecca Master Plan. Chris Jenkins, Parks Director, approached us to create a recommendation, so we did that. And we're excited to see the master plan going forward for Lake Rebecca. And then same with the Malcolm Trail project that's coming forward. We were recommending maybe putting in a couple of art benches, if that's feasible. So we want to kind of make the space nicer by, and, and there aren't very many benches or any along that trail segment, and we know it's so popular down by the river and other parts of the city with the benches. So that's what some of our activities that we have done in the past, we're very kind of proud of that. And our ongoing, or what we're currently working on is our Creative Convergence is coming up on May 8th. This will be our third one. This will be at the Studio Downtown, which we are going to roll out, I'm waiting for a drumroll, the Google Calendar for the art community. So we're going to have a presentation on our art calendar. I think Ryan McCoy has been working on that, and he's going to put down, put together a presentation, since we hope to have a lot of the arts organizations in the room on how they access it and use it. And it should be, that will be the day that it'll be launched. So we're very excited about that. And it's been a need in the art community for a number of years. We keep hearing that over and over. So we're glad to that we can facilitate that and get that done. Another really cool thing that we're working on is Shakespeare in the Park. We've talked, been talking to Steve Reed, that was his project, a classical ensemble. And they are willing to come to Hastings and put on Twelfth Night. That will be June 30th at the Vermilion Falls Park. So, and then all of our projects that we want to go forward with is not to replicate what's already being done in the city, but to supplement it and bring in a new context for different kinds of art. And another project we're working on is a combined plein air, which are painters that are doing a sketch, watercolor, whatever their medium is, in conjunction with acoustic musicians along the trail on, in Vermilion Park, Vermilion Falls Park. And that'll be in the fall. We're still working on that. So we want to do some really kind of new kind of fun things for the residents of Hastings. And one of our big projects we're working on is we're just starting a process on a request or proposal for a mural on the Civic Arena. So that's going to be a big project for us. Steve Reed's kind of leading that, and he's also been in, have done other requests or proposals in another arc and community of Eagan. So we are just starting that, and we, of course, hope to have it done by the Hockey Day in 2026. So we're ambitious. We, we think we can do it. We're going to go for it. And so that's kind of what we're up to. That's our accomplishments. And what we've learned over the past year is that everything takes a really long time. Just working through the government process, the lead times that we need to, that's why we've already got on our schedule things for June and September. And when we were working with Don for communications information, she wanted our stuff to be in her hands 60 days prior to the event. So that really kind of makes us start early, make sure the process is vetted, and can be accomplished by that time. And so we need to really work hard and have that long lead time. And just the processes and the approvals that has to go through City Council and the timing and the calendars, we've really, really, that was really a big message, that it really, we really need a long lead time. And everything takes time, but that's good. Everything that takes time is willing to wait and work for.
Right, right.
So that's what we have been up to in the past. I just want to thank the City Council and all staff for the support of the Art and Culture Commission. We have had a lot of people express gratitude that the Art and Culture Commission is here, and we hope to continue making Hastings a really cool, beautiful place. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Barb, very much. Council, any? Councilmember House?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to say thank you so much to you and all the commissioners who put so much work towards all of this. I'm really excited to hear about possible murals and also that art calendar, so we can start kind of coming to each place. And Shakespeare in the Park, I think it'll be very fun. Please keep us up to date on anything as well. Very excited for you.
Certainly will. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Anyone else? Barb, I would extend my thank you too. Love hearing everything that's going on, looking forward to everything that's in your future too. You know, I, I understand how you try to put people together and you all want to do the same thing, but everybody wants to do different, right? So thank you for being the Chair of that committee and that commission and, you know, leading as much as you can. And I appreciate all the commissioners that are on there as well.
Thank you. The commissioners work very hard, and I have to say, my time being spent on the Planning Commission and City Council has helped me tremendously lead this new commission.
Well, thank you. Councilmembers, are there any items to be considered? Okay. Approval of minutes. Councilmembers, are there any? Oops, sorry. Yes. I did. I didn't want to skip the audience, or on Zoom. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to the audience at this time, or the council at this time in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, I, I see nothing, so, and I see no one in the audience. Thank you, Dan. Council, I would accept a motion for the consent agenda. Councilmember Pambo and Councilmember Lawrence, any discussion, council? All those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye. Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay, and that motion prevails. Tonight, we have a resolution for receiving bids and awarding contracts for the 2024 Neighborhood Project. And this item, we will have an introduction by Public Works Director Ryan Stemsky. Welcome, Ryan.
Thanks, Mayor, members of the council. We did open bids for the 2024 Neighborhood Infrastructure Improvement Project on April 5th. Got good competitive bids by eight qualified contractors, so that's always exciting for our large neighborhood project. The low bidder was A1 Excavating, and they came in nearly 19% under our engineer's estimate. So this is for the contract amount. So that's a, that's a major cost savings in our, in our bonding efforts, and so that was great to see. Further, A1 Excavating has completed projects, the same projects in Hastings successfully, on time, on budget, with low or no change orders. In the interview process, they scored very well across the metro and were a qualified bidder in our post-bid qualifications. So all good news. We're very excited to get going on the project. And so staff does recommend the low bid in the amount of $2,797,421.60. And the resolution for approval is in your packets, and I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ryan. Council questions? Councilmember Fox?
Your Honor, I, I move to approve the, the resolution as in the packet, as it is stated in the packet.
Councilmember House, a second. Any discussion, council? All those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye. Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay, and that motion prevails. And Ryan, you may continue with the resolution for receiving bids and awarding contract for the 2024 Mill and Overlay.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council as well. We took bids on the Mill and Overlay program this year on March 21st and had five bidders. Had a little bit of a interesting bid on this one. We had a very, very low bituminous price per ton in one of the low bidders, or in the low bidder's bid, that definitely did not fit industry standards, although we would have liked it to. We did talk to the bidder about this math error, and really, these are sealed bids, so there's not a negotiation. We talked to them. They admitted the error, and so the bids, that bid was retracted, and it just ended there. So then we went on to the second bidder, McNamara Contracting. They're a tried and true contractor in town that have done these projects, have done neighborhood projects for us as well. So a good local contractor, and their bid at $1,026,303.12 is within our budget for the Mill and Overlay. The Mill and Overlay project has kind of a complex budgeting process. It has a street budget. It has some ADA improvements, that we, we go and grab those sidewalk improvement areas and pet ramp improvement areas. And then we also, this year, are including some rebolting of the vintage water main valves that have caused us problems when we go to exercise and operate. So when we're in there working on the streets, we're going to go and dig up those, those water main bolt improvements and, and put the new stainless steel variety on there and improve the water system as we, as we go. So we are with all those bid, or those fund components. This project is, is on the budget for 2024 with this bid, so therefore, we recommend approval of the resolution in your packet awarding the project. And with that, any questions I can take as well?
Thank you, Ryan. Councilmember Leifeld?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution awarding the contract to the lowest responsible bidder of McNamara Contracting as presented.
Thank you, Councilmember Leifeld, and a second. Councilmember Lawrence, any discussion, council? All those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye. Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay, and that motion prevails. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Tonight, under Public Works, we have a County Road 42 pedestrian study. And for this item, we have an introduction from Dakota County Transportation Project Manager Bryce LaBrune and John Kaven, if he would, wishes to. Welcome, Bryce.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thanks for having me. Yeah, here tonight in support of the Second Street West and Injured Road Corridor Study. And there's a piece of Mississippi River Greenway Improvements as well, County Project 42161. So I'm the project manager for this effort for Dakota County and the Transportation Department. And yeah, basically- I'm going to kind of walk you through some project background, you know, where we've been, kind of where we're going and answer some questions. So where did this project come from? This 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 effort was originally part of the 2021-2022 County Pedestrian Crossing Safety Assessment. So in that effort, that was something that we worked with the Traffic Department to basically find representative sites across Dakota County with all our different roadway types. So two lane, you know, three lane, four lane, rural, urban, suburban, all different contexts to basically try to get consistent pedestrian crossing safety infrastructure treatments. So and then also kind of applications for those. So we tried to find representative locations all the way across the county with some geographic equity, tried to get one in at least every municipality. And this was the location that we ended up looking at in Hastings was Second Street West at Madison Street or Casal 42 and Injured Road. Yeah. So we went through a process with this study where we took some, you know, preexisting data, pedestrian counts, traffic counts, some speed data, kind of all our different engineering judgment points of information, right? Traffic speed, et cetera. And then from there, tried to see, you know, what types of improvements we could make, what would make sense. Did some pretty involved public engagement with that. So over here on the right side, you can see this is kind of the the layout of, you know, information that we tried to produce for each one of these locations. So this location, we had some resident concerns on crossings, access to the Mississippi River Greenway, which comes in from Spring Lake Park to the west and then goes down along the Mississippi River. And then some of the key findings were that a lot of people were observed kind of crossing away from intersections, not where the existing pedestrian ramps are. There's some confusion due to the dispersed crossings. So there's a couple of different locations where the trail crosses. Nothing is really marked right now. The wayfinding, you know, signage for the trail, which is kind of the heavy pedestrian bicycle use, isn't very good at the moment. And basically, we came to the conclusion that there were more issues than just the spot treatments that we're looking looking to do for this effort. And we pushed it into a wider corridor study. So some of these locations, we were able to do, you know, some signing, striping, add some flashing lights, things like that to kind of enhance safety, you know, in the short term, near term, really quick implementations. And this one, there's just more more at play, basically. So that's where this study kind of came from. Project limits go from Lock Boulevard just outside of the city limits, but that's where the Greenway meets County Highway 42 and then goes down to Pine Street. And then we also had a small section of the Mississippi River Greenway. Since we were in the area, we'd been looking at redoing pavement, you know, poor condition for quite a while. So since we kind of had the engineering focus already in this area, we decided to take the economy of scale, also partner with our Parks Department and look at some of the design elements of that as well in a little more detail. So we partnered with H R Green, who you all might be familiar with some of their staff from the 61 study. They won this project to help us out with some of the engineering stuff. And we moved into kind of the the study portion of of this effort. So the goals leading in were to review the current roadway sidewalk trail design and sort of the pedestrian network. We have some things in our county county transportation plan, our pedestrian bicycle study that aren't necessarily being met along this area. So we wanted to make sure, you know, we kind of got the full picture of that. We collected, again, more traffic data along the entire corridor. So intersection counts, speeds, volumes, things like that. Did some decently intensive community engagement to kind of hear from the neighborhood, which turned out to be extremely important. And then, yeah, we're looking to provide alternative for some short term, long term improvements and then eventually provide a recommendation and or preliminary design for a future project or projects through this area. So that's kind of where we're at right now was developing alternatives. But we went and did some community engagement. We had online survey and a comment map that was open and advertised to the public. We got some decent responses on that. That was open for about a month, leading up to the open house. And then we had our open house on January 23rd. Had decent attendance, heard a lot from the neighborhood, heard things that we maybe wouldn't have otherwise. So it was nice to have that step in the study before we moved into directly into recommendations. Yeah. So then we kind of took all of that together. Basically, what we heard at that initial open house was that, you know, vehicle speeds through the area are a common concern. And that was something that we kind of knew coming in, but it it comes a little differently when you hear it from folks that are right in the area, right? And our traffic data confirmed that as well, both from the pedestrian crossing study and this effort. Also, you know, people were able to confirm that the existing intersections and crossings are just not very straightforward, kind of confusing. People getting lost, things just aren't very clear, which doesn't lend itself to safety. Trail and sidewalk continuity was a was a bit of a concern as well. There's segments of trail that kind of start and stop, again, along with the unclear crossings, segments of sidewalk that kind of just end at driveways, you know, and people just had a general desire to see it more well complemented with pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. Also, we heard a lot about the poor trail pavement, both along County 42 and on the segment of Greenway. And we kind of took everything together, met as a project team here in Hastings with with Hastings staff, and then developed, you know, some engineering, super high level alternatives, which I'll kind of briefly go over here. So these kind of go from, you know, low end, near term, pretty achievable stuff that we that we could do to, you know, a little more aspirational, maybe longer longer term fixes for the entire corridor, right? And again, this is this is before we get into the the very specifics of engineering, it's just kind of like, you know, we have the roster of of available treatments and kind of just took a look at, you know, what we could fit where to kind of meet the goals and address some of the things that we heard and issues that we see. So there's some common things. There's bypass lanes, which is a little uncommon for this area, which basically that means rather than a left turn lane that you move into to take a left turn, the left turn lane is the normal through lane. And then there's widening out to the right for those through lanes that people can pass vehicles that maybe have to slow down or stop for a left turn. And that's really more of a rural design, something that you see out in, you know, the wide open country where, you know, moving that vehicle fast is kind of the main priority and giving them a way to get around. In an urban area like this, that was one of the things that we knew from the bicycle and pedestrian study that was an issue, can create a multi lane threat, basically, where if this vehicle on the through lane is stopped, somebody's coming up behind them at a high rate of speed and swings out. And if somebody crosses because this vehicle stopped to let them go maybe rather than turning left, that can cause an issue where people get surprised. And that's actually something that we heard had happened to people as kind of a personal experience out here. So that's something that's kind of common to all of these. And then, you know, basically, you know, there's a key down here. It's a little tough to see, but just looking at where we can fit treatments without having to completely go in and redo the road. The road doesn't need to be reconstructed necessarily. Infrastructure is in pretty good shape, but just what we could do in these first couple sort of concepts to, again, attempt to lower speeds, straighten out some of these crossing issues, kind of make it so that we can make crossings that make sense and that are safe, that we can add treatments to to, again, meet those goals. So this next one, so basically this first one is kind of narrowing from the outside in at certain locations, which can be done pretty cost effectively and can make some good improvements. This next one is using some of the excess width from the inside, so potentially looking at medians, you know, kind of storyboarding, things like that. But basically, all the outside infrastructure, the trails, the sidewalks for these first two kind of stay in place for the most part. So it works, but it's just taking what we have now and trying to improve it with what we've got, basically. And then these next two, again, are a little little further out, maybe a little more aspirational, so to speak. But that's something that we'll assess over the next couple of weeks and then after another round of public engagement. And then this one is also kind of a mix where we have some, you know, speed control curb extensions, which is some of that narrowing, possibly looking at, you know, addressing some of the continuity issues with the trails. We did hear that a lot of people like to use the Mississippi River Greenway loop down through the parks on the waterfront, get to downtown, and then they'll come back up or vice versa, up the hill and then back to this location. You know, some people are starting at the Y, some people are starting in the neighborhood or somewhere in between, and they use that as a sub loop of the regional trail system. So this kind of looks at potentially using some of that excess width that we have throughout stretches of this area, especially the higher speed area, kind of west and north of First Street, and possibly leaving some space for some on street cycling infrastructure. It's something that is utilized now, but maybe possibly formalizing that again, something we'll have to work through more. And then this is kind of furthest out, you know, maybe with potential development, taking a harder look at, you know, intersection controls. Does a roundabout make sense? Does a change in intersection control make sense? Probably would require further study. And then these let these this one, three and four, also look at addressing some of the trail gap issues. So the segment from Lock Boulevard to Riverdale or further was a spot where, you know, we saw the potential for possibly adding some multi use trail to the outside, maybe widening sidewalk to multi use trail where there is just currently sidewalk, say, near the the hospital, things like that. So we'll kind of formalize these a little more, expand on this a little bit, bring this back to public engagement, you know, see what the public kind of thinks and do a little more of our own analysis as far as programming, what we think we can fit, what makes sense. We do have a overlay potentially on the horizon of this corridor in 2028. We might look at, you know, trying to fit something in there, depending on what level of project we end up with. But we think we've got, you know, a decent roster of options. And again, these are called alternative one through four. Doesn't necessarily mean it has to be exactly what's on each of these. But it could be, you know, some elements from from each respective alternative, again, as it makes sense. We're trying to take this this corridor, you know, contextualize it to the the more urban, kind of residential institutional uses that we actually have. And then again, increase safety. So I mentioned earlier, kind of the the subtask to this one that we're partnering with our Parks Department. We're taking a look at this segment of the Mississippi River Greenway, basically north, that goes off of the County Highway 42 right of way. This was put in at the same time as Casal 42 was last reconstructed, I think in the late 90s. And it was something I think that was just sort of fit in, right? So as they saw an opportunity, there was a little bit of a a preexisting access road to the Lock and Dam embankment that they were able to use, preserve the right of way, and then build this trail, which it's a great connection right now. It has some issues though. So the trail pavement's in bad condition. There's some substandard curves. The the climb is steeper than we would normally like on the regional greenway, sorry, on the greenway system or our regional trail system in Dakota County. And then it's narrower as well. So we're looking at basically designing a bit of a rebuild, you know, trying to keep as much of it as possible, using the existing land that we have. But then, you know, applying some fixes, so fixing some of those curves, lowering the slopes as much as possible so accessibility is increased, just making it a better experience, more in line with the rest of our greenway system. So we're kind of ongoing with construction. We're looking at potential construction 2025. More to come on that. And then we'll also incorporate an overlay of the trails along Lock and Dam number two and then in River Flats Park, which were originally going to be this summer. But with some of the construction staging things that might be at play with this segment, we decided to kind of push it a year and consolidate them together. So as much as we'd like to see that, you know, smoothed out and finished up, it just made more sense to try and lump lump some of those improvements together. So as far as remaining project schedule goes, we're looking at having a second round of public engagement at an open house at May 6th from 4:30 to 6:30. We'll have similar to the first one mailed out invites, a little more notification for the for the neighborhood to come to that. We're looking at getting a preliminary estimate and a layout in kind of May, June 2024 for programming purposes. Again, it's pretty far out yet, but we're going to just try and, you know, get get close to what could be a project. There's more design, obviously, after this. This is what we're we're looking at approaching more of a 30% sort of layout or design, which is very preliminary with a lot of work left. But try to get to that recommendation. And then, yeah, try and get to kind of final plans and bidding fall, winter of 2024 for that trail segment off highway. And then looking at potential 2025 construction. And then, like I had mentioned, there's a tentative overlay for 2028 for this corridor. And we think there's a chance that we could fit some of these improvements in on that timeline. Again, lot between then and now. And yeah, we'll look to get more input from the public and kind of see where this takes us. So I can stand for any questions or comments.
Great.
That anybody might have.
Thank you, Bryce.
Yeah.
One question, May 6th, is that at the YMCA again?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I didn't hear you say that. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Verichov?
Hi. Yes. Thank you for this presentation. It's incredibly helpful. I just want to commend you and and again, say thank you for all of the public feedback and all the open houses that you've gotten. I especially appreciated the specific numbers that you had where these were the amount of people that responded and here's the amount of people that came. One specific question that I have, and by no means is this my area of expertise in my in in the paid work that I do. But when we're looking at all four different alternatives and features with each one, comes, of course, eliminating the bypass lane. And so just that I understand, is that necessary for each one of the different plans to be able to occur? And if so, or even if not, is the elimination of the bypass lanes based on you had said earlier in your presentation that there was some public feedback and folks were pretty optimistic or wanting that? And I guess I'm wondering if there's more data to somebody that kind of likes.
Yeah.
The bypass lanes. I'm wondering if there is, you know, are there crash records or police reports or or is this just more like, we're hearing this from the public and we want to make sure that we're taking their their considerations into planning for this? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. So I think it's more of a of a of a design issue, right? So there was some data into it. We did take intersection counts, which is very detailed at a couple of different days to kind of confirm, you know, any of our assumptions leading into it. And that was one of the one of the things, whether or not, I think, I believe on there, we, oops, sorry, we slideshow, we did identify a couple of locations where we'd convert them into a left turn lane. So here at Pleasant, here at State Street, where basically the intersection count showed us that we still needed that provision, right? But rather than rather than it being in the form of a bypass lane, it would be more of a traditional left turn lane where there'd be some different striping. It's very kind of slight top down changes, but it makes a difference in how it kind of the corridor acts. So rather than a car sort of appearing in the bypass lane to say somebody crossing or on the side street around another car, it's it's more of a, you know, through lane, move over into the left turn lane sort of context. So it's it's kind of nuanced, but I guess it's both. So again, the bypass lane isn't really something that is a is a common practice in an urbanized area like this, you know, where there's curb and lots of things going on, more things going on than a rural area. So that was the initial assumption that we checked it at each location, whether or not it needed a left turn lane with those intersection counts. So wasn't really a public feedback thing. It was just the public feedback part of it was more we heard from folks that the issue was occurring. So luckily, through this area, we didn't have a ton of really, really bad crash issues necessarily displayed. But that's not really something that we wait around for anymore. There's certain things that we see that we know are issues that could cause that type of crash that we're trying to get ahead of. So hopefully that answers.
Thank you. Councilmember Verichov, Councilmember Leifeld?
Thank you, Your Honor. Bryce, nice to see you here in Hastings, speaking in front of us. Couple things. First question, it goes with this. What is the timeframe for the Dakota County expansion of the Lower Spring Lake Park Trail up to the trail that connects off of, is it Lake Clayton up there? I've heard that that's being taken, going to be connecting that bike trail from Lower Spring Lake. Do we have a timeframe on that?
Oh, you mean the, so the the
It'll connect with the other trail.
Rosemount East segment? That's, I believe it's under construction. Yeah, it started.
It's already started.
Yeah.
Awesome. So
So I think fall, right? Yeah.
Great. I part time work downtown at a restaurant with a big patio. You can all figure out where that's at.
Sure.
Amazed at the number of people who come in on their bikes.
Mm-hmm.
It is insane. And was chatting with a number of people yesterday about that particular spot.
Sure.
And we talked about the 10 mile loop and just really watching you do, you know, looking at these maps, little bit from each one that I think looks really awesome, right? Still concerned about crossing at Riverdale because of the curve.
Yep.
That's, you know, alleviating by having the bike trail, if you do that on the east side, I guess that sort of alleviates that idea. But still would be a crossing for people with strollers and small children on bikes or what have you. So that spot has always been a bit of a concern. And I know Heidi and I ride that quite a bit and we kind of do a of do a street, wait till we get past it, and then we cross on our own. Because it's a little scary there. You never know what's coming around that corner. Love the raised crosswalk thing.
Sure.
And the bumpouts.
Yeah.
Just love these ideas. I'd love to see it happen sooner than later, obviously, but excited because of all the people who come in to town and comment.
For sure.
And it's a little confusing out there.
Yep.
When you get to the corner at Locke, it's like, you know, it gets a little confusing on where you're supposed to be going and how you're supposed to get down around the river. And this is super awesome. And will really help our chamber and just with the tourism and getting people down here on their bikes. So great job, Bryce. Very impressive. Can't wait to see how you all end up. Gonna say, don't like the idea of the two roundabouts.
[laughing]
Only because I just don't see the the number of traffic coming off of those streets.
Yep.
Right? The number, the number of cars turning on Locke. There's a couple hundred houses at most out there, what, 80 maybe? So there's not a lot of traffic coming off of Locke. Pleasant, obviously, some significant traffic, but not near what I would think is necessary to support a roundabout. And then the left-turn lanes makes more sense. I mean, from a pedestrian standpoint, yeah, you're looking at a car directly in the lane, and they've stopped for you. And then somebody comes barreling around them. That's my very first accident happened doing that. So
Multilane threat.
So, yep, exactly. So, yeah, this is exciting. I can't wait to see what you guys decide on.
Yeah.
Thanks for the community support and the, you know, our partnership with the county. It's always, something good always comes of it. So, thank you.
Appreciate the input. Yeah. And the 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 spot at Locke is an interesting one. It's something that we, you know, keeps coming up as a discussion. And one of that was one of our goals. I didn't list it specifically, but, you know, working on that context, coming into the city from the west, from that rural, and trying to get it to stick. It's something that we see the speed carries pretty significantly down into the neighborhood. And, yeah, yeah, we think we think we've got a range of options that, you know, could approach that. So.
Thank you, Councilmember Leifeld. Councilmember Fox.
Thank you, Your Honor. Hi, Bryce. Thank you. John, thank you as well for the the public hearings. We were, the mayor was there. I was there. Commissioner Slavik was there. It was a really great, I I think it was a really great turnout. We had a lot of people who live along County Highway 42 who are concerned about people crossing and people just generally walking along, because people go so fast, right? So thank you for holding them and thank you for being there. One thing that I'm a little concerned about is the these are all really good ideas and they're they're great safety precautions to move forward with. The city will be responsible for 50, 15% of the costs. So this question, I think, goes to Commissioner Slavik and and City Administrator Watichah. First of all, excuse me, sorry, Bryce, these costs maybe wouldn't be incurred until '28, correct?
Yeah, little early to talk specifics necessarily. There is the, there's the element of the greenway. So it's, you know, which which parts apply where, right?
Yeah.
But, yeah, generally, it wouldn't be until, you know, the project year or thereafter.
Okay.
So so and that that's something we usually work through as we kind of work through that final design and approach a recommendation as well. We'll have some high-level costs, again, this spring. Again, just for CIP purposes, something that we'll work closely with the with city staff to, you know, work through and come to an agreement on. Yeah, right now, it's just the study. But it's also something that we have in in the scope for the consultant is to look at outside funding opportunities as well to that end.
Okay.
Which which helps everyone out. So these types of projects, there's a lot of funding around. We think we, you know, might have some chances, depending on what we come out with, with a preliminary design. And that was kind of one of the things that we'll work on, you know, once we have a recommendation, kind of that preliminary layout, is to look harder at that. So
Okay.
More to come. No specific answers yet. But noted, and it's definitely at the at the forefront of our minds. So.
Okay. I'd, thank you. Thank you. And and that's that's encouraging that there are places that we could find funding from that are not within the city, because
Potential.
We, potentially, we just don't have that kind of funding right now. And we we also haven't, as a a member of the Finance Committee, we just haven't even, like, considered this as part of our streets projects, right? So I I think this is a more long-term kind of conversation. So while it's really important and really critical, and to my constituents who live on County Highway 42 and they have expressed concerns, we've got a lot of ahead of, a lot ahead of us. So I just want to, I want to make sure that we acknowledge that 15% of this would come from the city. So I appreciate the presentation, and I love all the potential fixes. And I I, my favorite thing, and you know this about me, is that we have more potential for more community engagement, right? Where Commissioner Slavik will be there, I will be there, the mayor will be there, and we can meet at the, meet at the Y and hang out and talk about the future of County Highway 42. And we also need to budget this into the city's future. So I just wanted to make sure that we talked about that tonight.
Yeah. And that's something the the county's process was trying to get earlier and earlier on, too. So
Yeah.
If I understand correctly, normally, we wouldn't be looking at that until later in the summer, maybe in the fall initially.
Okay.
So this initial pass is a nice early opportunity to start having some of those discussions.
Okay, great. And whatever we can do as councilpeople to support those, like, grant processes early on, we would be happy to.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Councilmember Fox. Councilmember Pembel.
Bryce, thanks for the information. I also live in the neighborhood, and I've heard a lot from the constituents that whatever happens there, they don't want to see any speed increase or any ability to make it easier to get to downtown. I think that the discussion, and I was at the open house you had before, and but people were really, I've had more than a handful of people call me since that and say, hey, make sure that we hold the speed down. And and also, I'm on the board at Lakeside, and we are very concerned about the right-turn, left-turn access there into our entrance area. So keep us abreast and let us know how this is going to proceed. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pembel. Councilmember House.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bryce, thank you so much for coming out and presenting today. Few things are, is that I'm a frequent goer to Spring Lake Park, and I'm so happy to see the overall precaution of safety and pedestrian safety and biker safety being used in this. I do have a quick question with this. I know we wouldn't be narrowing the roads, it looks like, for this. How wide would lanes be for these, for the lanes of, for traffic?
So probably a little too early to be getting into specific dimensioning.
Okay, thank you.
There are elements, basically throughout all the, all the alternatives to have intermittent narrowing. So where you see where it says bump out, or these S C C E, these speed control curb extensions, are ways that we can, you know, narrow at turns or these medians at intervals, basically have some of that narrowing, some of that tightening, which is where you get, you know, the real results, basically, in in vehicle speed control. So there's a little bit of that. We do look at lane widths when we look at context, when we look at doing projects like this. We have gone to a slightly narrower lane width where it makes sense. I can't say for sure right now, but just knowing some of the the traffic volumes, the trucking volumes, things like that, it's something that we would consider. So again,
Thank you.
Not gonna, not gonna pin myself to a specific
No, that's okay.
Put it right now.
Just curious, just because I actually like it. And I've heard from people that they like it, too. It's a little bit safer, it seems, because it slows things down, makes you kind of stop and think a little bit more when you have to slow down. So, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Bryce, I mean, as Councilmember Fox said, we were there. We heard the major complaint of speed and safety. One reason why I think we heard that people like to speed on that road is because it's so wide.
Sure.
So narrowing it makes true sense, you know, for just, you know, our brains, we slow down. I appreciate the four alternative sites that you have shown us. Again, I'm concerned about the cost. We have a lot on our plate futuristically. So I'd be asking, I guess, for what's the most safest and the most impactful?
Yep.
With not as much change, because we know how people love change.
Yep.
But cost-effectively, too, you know, for both, for both sides. And futuristically, can we, you know, down the road, can we add then Pleasant Street?
Mm-hmm.
Roundabout. You know, I know that's what you're looking into the future, but I I'd appreciate consideration in just the the financial part of it.
Yeah, absolutely. And and again, you look at the alternatives as a whole, doesn't necessarily mean, you know, everything you see on the page has to happen all at once.
Sure.
That was kind of the point. And again, one of the main goals of the study and our scope here is to do that. Like I said, we're not looking to completely reconstruct the roadway, right? Yeah, trying to find that sweet spot where, you know, we think we can make it work, and there's there's still time, even even after we come up with a, you know, preferred layout, to potentially split things up, you know. You mentioned I was very careful to say project or projects. So this 2028 is an opportunity, right, to potentially implement some of, some or all, right, of these things. And, yeah, there's a lot of different levers we can pull to those ends, to what you're speaking to. So I appreciate.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Also, there's no action tonight. So we appreciate your update. Mr. Semsky, would you like to make a comment?
May I just ask one thing?
Sure.
Just to connect a conversation that we've been having with the county. Bryce
Brian, could you come up here, please?
Sure. Just want to touch base real quick on a lot of calls that we received at the city was the the crossing at the Confluence and and some of the county's study at that location and the intersection upstream and downstream of it. Don't want to put you on the spot, but you did used to work for me. Can you inform us a little bit about that study and where that works in the county's priorities, and if that's going to have a start and end date?
Sure.
For the council? Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if there's a specific start and end date at the moment, but I know you guys, you brought it up at the CIP meeting, correct?
Yep.
So came up there. That's something that our traffic department will go through on a rolling basis. So I mentioned right at way at the beginning, this pedestrian and bicycle or this pedestrian crossing safety assessment. That's generally where we'll go with that. So we'll take a look at the representative locations, see if they make sense from a recommendation standpoint for some sort of treatments. And then we do sometimes have a category or project where those can fit. I can't, I haven't heard an update on it, but it's something I heard, both in our public engagement. John forwarded me a couple of calls, and I passed that on, but I I'll I'll check in on that. I can get back to you. So no specifics right now, but it's been heard, and staff should be on it. So thank you.
Councilmember Verichov.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just like to reiterate exactly what Brian said. As somebody that has their ward that is part of that area, I also have a student that I'm driving to the high school. I probably cross through that particular area, I would say, usually about six times a day. It can be a little scary for pedestrians, so I really look forward to hearing what the county has in terms of recommendations of that.
For sure.
Anxiously await that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Verichov. Okay. Thank you, Bryce. Good to see you again.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Sure we'll see you in the future.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Tonight, under Parks and Recreation, we have a first reading for Chapter 94. And for this item, we have an introduction by our Parks and Recreation Director, Chris Jenkins. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yeah, fairly quick tonight. This is Ordinance 94. This is a first reading, and the second reading will be May 6. This is the rules and regulations of our parks and trail system. Knew there were a variety of things that needed to be cleaned up, discovered a number of things over the past couple of years that needed to be added via lease or agreement with another government agency, specifically the Mississippi River Boat Dock, the Mississippi River Boat Launch, and some Veterans Athletic Complex as well. This also tackles smoking, vaping, cannabis in parks, and cleans up a variety of different things. Make sure that we're in alignment with some of our other nuisance ordinances as well, specifically with with a leash law on that one. But nothing super crazy in here. The meat of old Ordinance 94 is in here. There's a lot fewer words in this. And worked in consultation with Attorney Land and Police Chief Willskey as well, to make sure that we're all on the same page with these ordinances. And again, we've had a lot of this in policy. Policy is not enforceable. Ordinance is enforceable. So we're making sure that we're we're getting the pieces in place that we need in place so that all of our staff can can do our jobs and our our community can have a great time in the parks. So with that, I don't want to go through each thing individually. You guys have it in your packet. But if anything stuck out at you, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you may have, to the best of my ability.
Sure. Thank you, Chris. Councilmember Fox.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a very specific question. You just mentioned the leash update. Can you, can you tell us about that, please, Chris?
Yes. Animals in parks must be on a leash or must be under control as if on a leash.
Okay.
So if an animal has good recall and walks next to you side by side and stays there, doesn't run off, and behaves themselves as if they were on a leash, they don't actually have to be on a leash.
Okay. Thank you. As a member of the Public Safety Committee, this has been a topic of conversation the past couple of years. We, we don't have a leash policy in Hastings. So that, that's why that caught my attention. Thank you for clarifying some of the just cleanup of Ordinance 94. Councilor Land, thank you for that work. This is cleaner. I I talked to Dan about it earlier today, and then I did kind of a side-by-side just reading. And they're both are like, pretty short.
Mm-hmm.
So it's easy to do. And like, this is, this makes a lot of sense. So thank you. That, when you said that, though, it just kind of like triggered something. So that's a future conversation about leash ordinances. But I would, we don't have an action.
No action, just a first reading.
So I just thank you for the clarification.
We have to, we have a motion. Yes.
Oh.
I move the first reading.
Thank you. And Councilmember Verichov for the second. Any discussion, Council? All those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. Second reading, May 6. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Tonight, we have a strategic plan, first quarter 2024. And we will have an introduction by City Administrator Dan Watichah. Welcome, Dan.
Thank you. I think the two pieces that I want to highlight with this are, we've done some refining of the report format. I think there's still some refinements to do. We struggle, or I personally struggle with the percentage reporting in there. I think, on the one hand, it makes it real accessible and easy to sort of see, are we on track? Which I think is what we're trying to get at. But it can also be deceptive. For example, some of the infrastructure projects, it might say, if I can find the right page, it might say, we're 35% complete on implementing our water system expansion plan, which is ready to PFAS. I don't think we're really at 35%. Really, where the percentages come from are just, in the tracking system, there's a number of steps, but they're all weighted equally. So the fact that we had a hearing with the House Capital Investment Committee meeting, might check off a step and give us percentages, but it, although it's important and moves us closer, it's not the same as actually building something which is just one step in there. So I think the percentages are something that still needs some refinement. We've also had a little bit of discussion internally at staff about having some reference to to, uh, next steps or some of the upcoming action items, uh, beyond just here's what was done in the, the past quarter. Um, so one, one comment is just that, uh, although I'm happy with what we have, um, uh, some refinements to how we report it. Uh, the other piece that I think is important for council, uh, and also benefit out there in TV land is, uh, our next council meeting, uh, May sixth, we actually have a workshop that evening about the strategic plan. So I think at that meeting, uh, maybe there's a little bit of input on the reporting format, but I think also dig into not every one of them, because we'll, we'll run out of time, but are there a couple of the, uh, priorities or the outcomes that, uh, would benefit at having some clarification or, or updating to them? Um, for example, uh, one of the, uh, initiatives in here talks about expanded revenues, which on its face sounds good, but from a staff standpoint, I'd really like to have some conversation with council at what's the goal, what are we trying to accomplish with that? And as an example, some of the, uh, potential revenue sources that might come out there, um, you know, hey, here's a way to raise a half million dollars, sounds good, we're trying to help the budget. It's the same residents and businesses paying it just through a fee instead of through a tax and you just, you didn't want to raise the tax by a half million dollars, so you did it through a fee. Is that really what you're trying to accomplish? Or are we trying to look at some sort of dedicated funding sources or outside funding? So just some better clarification at what are we trying to, uh, to do with, um, some of these priorities. And that, that just give that one as, as an example. There's a couple of others that, uh, could be interpreted two or three different ways and want to make sure we're all on the same page. Um, really, other than that, it's, it's a, a report that's status at where we're at. Um, I, but I could take any questions this evening and, uh, certainly also, uh, more in-depth conversation in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Councilmember Fox?
Thank you. Um, Dan, thank you. I, this is super helpful to, um, just keep track of the goals that we set as council people, but, um, I agree, I think the, the percentages are kind of skewed. Um, not everything is the same weight in terms of, um, the work that all of our staff members put into it. But I do still want to see some kind of metric about progress. Um, and I, this clearly isn't the, the thing that we need to see, but I'd, and I don't have the answer tonight, but I, I think it is helpful to see the progress and the, the progression that our staff and that you make in our strategic goals. So, um, while I agree, I think this isn't quite accurate, um, it's helpful to, to see any kind of forward motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Fox. And again, no action tonight, council. Also, we are going to have a PFAS update with Dan. You may continue.
Thank you. I was here two weeks ago and said that we would, in interest of communication and transparency, we would have PFAS updates at the first meeting of the month. And, and uh, here I'm already, um, pushing additional information in, into here. Um, but really it's because from the start, staff, council, uh, as we've talked about this for the past year and a half, we've really had an emphasis on wanting to make sure that we were transparent, uh, we communicate, maybe over-communicate. Um, and, uh, you might have heard, there was a, a significant update, uh, just last week, and it did not make sense to say, let's wait three weeks for the next council meeting to get updates. So you're getting an extra one tonight. Um, the EPA officially released its final maximum contaminant levels for PFOA and PFOS, uh, last Wednesday, the tenth, uh, at four parts per trillion. Uh, this includes five of the city's six wells. It also affects the Hastings Veterans Home, uh, over the new, uh, MCLs. Uh, the one well that is not over is at, uh, around three-point-seven parts per trillion versus the, the four parts. Uh, so it's right close. The other reality to it is the solution for treatment is the whole system. We can't really pick and choose, uh, five of the wells and not all six. So, uh, just note that. Um, the other piece I think, uh, that's important besides just here, here's this milestone that we've been waiting over a year for, for the EPA to finalize these numbers is, um, we certainly put an effort last week to making sure the word was out. We did a press release. There were multiple TV, newspaper, radio interviews, social media. Uh, we, uh, did a mail direct notice to our water customers. Um, uh, important, and I'll mention it in a second here, uh, holding a public neighborhood, uh, meeting, uh, in the, the near future to, uh, answer people's questions. But some of the initial response, we got back immediately was, what does this mean for us? Do I need to do this? And although we want to get the information out there and it may be more of an urgency for some individuals or some families that might have some heightened health concerns and really advise that they talk to, to their, uh, their doctor, their healthcare providers for, uh, specific, uh, advice for them. Really, what it, it does is it starts the clock ticking for the city. Uh, and we just want to make sure that people are, again, communication transparency, that our people, our, our residents, our businesses are aware of this and what the city's doing. It isn't starting, uh, in a call to action for our residents, it's a call to action here at the DAIS and, and working with our Public Works Department. Um, uh, that call to action is, uh, essentially we need to mitigate PFAS within five years. Uh, so a little bit longer timeframe than we had anticipated, um, uh, but certainly some, uh, urgency for us. We do believe we are shovel-ready to begin construction as soon as this summer. But even if, if we're able to do that, which depends on coming up with money, which we're actively pursuing, even if we start this summer, it's about a three and a half or longer, three and a half years to get to that compliance. So, um, five years sounds like a time to work with, but it's, it's, uh, we're going to need every, every single, uh, uh, day in that, that timeframe. It's, it's not a whole lot to work with. Uh, the other piece I want to mention, uh, and we will be sending out another piece of mail to our residents, a postcard later this week. Uh, we just this morning got the neighborhood meeting scheduled. So that will be, uh, six PM on Thursday, May ninth, at the high school auditorium. Uh, and, uh, although there'll be a presentation piece to it, I, I think the more important piece is a chance to, uh, question and answer with the experts. We'll have representatives from the Minnesota Department of Health, Minnesota Pollution Control Agency there, uh, and, um, drill them with all your questions about, um, uh, health impacts, uh, the, the, um, need for, uh, treating PFAS, how we treat PFAS, um, uh, whatever questions people have, um, cer- certainly that's a great place to get those answers. Uh, but with that, I can certainly take any questions that council might have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Counsel? Any questions? Okay. Counsel, any announcements? I have a few, quite a few. On April seventeenth, the recycle crash course explains where our recycling goes and why it works. Volunteer to plant trees in celebration of Arbor Day on Friday, April nineteenth. Please pre-register. Attend the birding festival at Carpenter Nature Center on Saturday, April twentieth, with classes to introduce you to raptors, birding, bird banding, and guide bird trips, guided bird trips. Wednesday, April twenty-fourth, the organics crash course explains how composting works and benefits our community. Attendees will have the chance to win a kitchen countertop bin to collect food scraps. Dakota County Historic Society invites you to Black Hastings, a community gathering at the Lash, Shot, Lache Memorial Museum in South St. Paul on Saturday, April twenty-seventh. During this free event, lunch will be provided and attendants can view exhibits, including Black Pioneers in Dakota County and learn about the upcoming George Daniels exhibit at the Laduke Estate and plan for the Black Heritage Trail. Join us for the twenty-mile guided bird and bison bike ride with birds from Carpenter Nature Center and an interpretive bison stop at Spring Lake Park. Please pre-register. The Arts and Culture Commission hosts the annual Creative Convergence on Thursday, May ninth. All arts and culture organizations and individuals are invited to attend and network. Please join us, six PM, Thursday, May ninth, in the Hastings High School Auditorium for a presentation on PFAS in Hastings. Representatives from the Minnesota Department of Health and Minnesota Pollution Control Agency will be present for question and answer period. On Saturday, May eleventh, we have a mattress and box spring drop-off and document shredding event. Discount price for mattresses and box springs, restri- recycling and shredding, shredding is free. Info on the city website. Meetings coming forward, Tuesday, April sixteenth, seven PM, Heritage Preservation Commission. Wednesday, April seventeenth, six PM, Parks and Recreation Commission. Thursday, April eighteenth, six thir- six o'clock PM, Public Safety Advisory Commission. I think that's six-thirty. Six-thirty for the Public Advisory Commission. Monday, April twenty-second, seven PM, Public Safety Committee, seven PM Planning Commission. Monday, April twenty-ninth, seven PM Utilities Commission, Committee. And Monday, May sixth, five-thirty, City Council has a workshop with our strategic planning and seven PM City Council Regular Meeting. With that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Councilmember Pembel? Councilmember House? No discussion. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And we are adjourned. Oh, she sounds terrible.